Tuesday evening with us and we look forward to recognizing so many of you. Before we can get started with that, we need to call our meeting to order. We have a quorum and that gets us to the allegiance or pledge of allegiance. So, well, our senior board member, please start us off. I was gonna say, it's very cute. All right, I'd like to see a motion to adopt the agenda as it's listed.
Second, second.
All right, it's been first and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, that's unanimous. Thank you so much. That gets us to awards and recognitions. As you can see, board members, we have a full house. And I guarantee you, there's even more outside of this room, uh, looking at this list. So, we appreciate y'all giving us your time today and we look forward to seeing as many of you as possible. So, take it away, Dr. Battle.
Thank you so much, Chair Rod, and good evening, board members and those who've joined us in the audience this evening. We have a lot of outstanding students and staff to recognize tonight and it brings me great joy to be able to, um, celebrate them. I will first start with Head Magnet Middle School, which recently won second place in the Montgomery Bell Academy Sixth Grade Math Invitational. This was a competition featuring public and private schools from Davidson, Williamson, and Wilson Counties. And the head math team was one of the very best in a crowded and talented field. And Dylan Smith, one of those head students, also won second place individually. Let's give him a round of applause. Excited to say a big congratulations to math teacher Latasha Bryant. Are you here with us this evening? You stand on up and come up to the front. And to the four students who competed so well, showed off their math skills and brought home the trophies. Y'all, let's give it up for Caleb Boyd, Graham Herring, Kayden Russell, and Dylan Smith. Y'all make us so proud. I'd like to have you and any staff here, including the principal from, um, Head Magnet Middle, to come on up. We'd like to celebrate you and take a picture with you as well. Y'all, one more round of applause. Yes, I love it, just setting the standard from the middle school. We appreciate you all again. Congratulations. Now, before we celebrate a lot more of our students, I want to take a moment to recognize some of our MMPS principals for going above and beyond to serve in leadership positions in various state, regional, and national organizations. As we all know, principals have very busy jobs running their schools. They are the CEOs of their buildings and leaders of their school communities. And the work never stops to make sure students, teachers, support staff, families, and community partners have the resources and the information they need. But some of our principals want to work even more. They are educators through and through, and that passion for education has driven them to lead not only in their school communities, but in other arenas as well. So, tonight, I'm excited to recognize the following principals. And principals, I ask you to come on up, um, to the podium when I call your name and be prepared to take a quick photo. And then we'll get, um, everyone, well, after we call everyone, we'll get everyone up for a photo and we'll go from there. First up, we have Principal Kevin Armstrong of Dupont Hadley Middle School. Principal Kevin Armstrong is president-elect of the National Association of Elementary School Principals, which is actually a professional organization for both elementary and middle school principals from across the United States. Principal Brenda Diaz of Nashville Big Picture High School and MMPS Virtual School is a principal leadership coach with Big Picture Learning and also sits on the Knowledge Works Leading Change Network Steering Committee. Principal Diaz couldn't be here with us tonight because of a previously scheduled event in one of her schools, and we certainly understand that, but celebrate her this evening. Next, we have Principal Myron Franklin of Johnson Alternative Learning Center, who is unable to join us at this very moment. Um, he is the Region Three Director of the National Alternative Education Association. All right, I believe I saw Principal Anne Marie Gleason with us of Harpeth Valley Elementary School. Principal Gleason is Associate Director of the Tennessee Principals Association. And we greatly appreciate her leadership in that role in representing Metro Nashville Public Schools. Next up, we have Principal Susan Kessler of Hunter's Lane High School. Principal Kessler is a board member and past president of Tennessee's ASCD. So, thank you for your leadership in that role in representing Metro Tules. Principal Deanne Marie of Cambridge Early Learning Center. Principal Marie is Executive Board Member and President-Elect of the Tennessee Principals Association. Thank you for your leadership. And last but not least, Principal Romi Vassar from Rose Park Magnet Middle School. Okay, we love Principal Vassar, but he does have his football team here in the audience. We love you. You would've gotten the same applause regardless, I promise. Principal Vassar is a mentor principal with the Center for Strategic Leadership and Organizational Conference. So, thank you, Principal Vassar, for your leadership, um, in representing Metro Nashville Public Schools. And to all of our executive principals who are leading the work, not only here in MMPS, but across the state and across the country, we appreciate you. Let's give them all another round of applause. All right, Principal Vassar, don't you go too far, but you can take your seat. This has been a great, uh, football season for Metro Nashville Public Schools. And we'll get to our newly crowned state champions in a moment. But I don't think everyone knows that we also have football in our middle schools and our high schools have freshman teams that compete as well. So, I'd like to recognize our city champions at those levels, starting with Rose Park Magnet Middle School, our middle school football champions for 2023. All right, as they're coming up, and as we're recognizing them, we've got a quick video to share about the Titans' victory in the championship game.
This year's been a lot of heat between the two teams. Uh, we've seen a lot of stuff on social media. We've seen the skill, we've seen the size, but now we're here at the big game, so we're gonna see who's the best man.
We're here at the MMPS Middle School Football City Championship. Tonight, we have the reigning defending champ, East Magnet Middle School, against Rose Park. Both teams have come in undefeated. All the crowd is hyped. We want to win. We ready for some football in middle school at MMPS. So, this was Rose Park's first city football championship, which they achieved with an undefeated nine and zero record. So, congratulations to Coach Arnett Bodenhammer, all the players, their families, and everyone else involved. And thank you to our elementary and middle schools athletic director Penny Howard. Um, Titans, congratulations. And we'll be up there in just a moment to take a quick picture. So, let's give it up for them again. Can't see everybody. Come on, you have to come up. We got this, we got this. All right, Rose Park, y'all better be good. I know lots of y'all's parents. Yes.
Thanks y'all for coming.
Thank you. Congratulations.
All right, I'd like to welcome, um, James Lawson High School, um, into the meeting space. All right, I will start talking about James Lawson High School as they're coming in. Um, so, James Lawson High School, our newest MMPS freshman football champions. As you know, James Lawson is a brand-new high school this year, and they hit the ground running in so many different areas. The freshman team went five and one this season and won the, the, won the hard-fought championship game in triple overtime. Congratulations to Coach Brian Lilly, the 37 players on the James Lawson freshman team, their families, and everyone else who played a part in this success story, including the faculty and staff. Lawson Lightning, congratulations. We're so glad to have you here. And we'll take a quick photo. I'm sure Epic Girl already has one.
Thank y'all for coming. Oh, my God, that is so cute. That's really cute. Thank y'all for coming, guys. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, can we get East, um, Nashville Magnet High School into the meeting space? All right, y'all. So, now we're moving to varsity football. Did you know that there was just one district in the whole state of Tennessee that had two teams in, in state championship games this year? Do you want to guess what school district that was? Of course, Metro Nashville Public Schools. I am very proud of these teams for their competitiveness, their work ethic, their skill on both sides of the ball, and their teamwork. Let's start with East Nashville Magnet High School. East had a new coach this season, Coach Damian Harris, but they didn't miss a beat. They just kept on keeping on and went to the Blue Cross Bowl in Class 3A for the third year in a row. And they did this in a season when they only got to play two home games. And if you haven't seen the electrifying, record-setting 99-yard touchdown run by sophomore running back Keelan Anderson, you need to run, not walk, to find that video after you leave here tonight. I want to thank, want to thank Coach Harris, his staff, all the East players, their families, Principal Myra Taylor, the entire staff at East, and everyone who was involved in this great season. We often sometimes leave out the cheerleaders and the bands, uh, just magnificent in rooting their team on to success. Um, so, congratulations, um, to East Nashville Magnet High School on your runner-up championship silver ball that you have there. And thank you for representing Nashville so well. Congratulations to you all. I don't want to rub it in. I think I beat a few of them in golf yesterday, but we'll leave that there. Congratulations. All right, and let's please welcome our newest state champions into the meeting space, Pearl Cone High School Firebirds. All right, so now we have our state champions in the space. We've already celebrated them on their campus, but it's appropriate and important that we do that here in front of the full board and the whole community, watching in person and on the Metro Nashville Network. The Pearl Cone Firebird, Firebirds soared throughout this season, dominating all the way as they went undefeated and finished 15-0. They topped it off by beating Upperman 36-27 in the Blue Cross Bowl on December 2nd, leaving no doubt as to who was the best team in Class 4A. I'll talk more in a moment about a few of the star players who have earned individual honors, but this was, first and foremost, an amazing team effort. So many hours, so many practices, so many reps, so many days on the field, in the weight room, in the video room, on the bus to away games, staying up late to finish homework, yes, completing homework, and studying for tests, you name it. This team of student athletes putting the time together to reach the greatest heights. I'm especially happy for Coach Tony Burnettti, who is the winningest coach in MMPS history, and for his entire staff and all the players who've worked hard, so hard to achieve this. Also want to congratulate Pearl Cone Principal Miriam Harrington, MMPS High School Athletic Director Mark North, the faculty and staff, the band, the cheerleaders, all the family members, and everyone else who cheered the team on. I also want to thank the Tennessee Titans, Metro Government, and everyone who helped us install a new turf field at Pearl Cone back at the start of the season. See what a little turf will do. And for those of you who haven't heard the news, that we were able to share the celebration at Pearl Cone Friday night, we have received a generous donation that will allow everyone on the team to get a ring to commemorate their achievement, and the Titans will host their ceremony. Firebirds, you've done an incredible job. We are so proud of you. Thank you for representing Metro Nashville Public Schools in the classroom and on the field. At this time, we'd like to take a picture with you with the gold ball and your board representative to celebrate you again. Get used to these celebrations. There's many more to come. So, again, congratulations, Pearl Cone High School Firebirds. And don't leave after this picture, please. All right, so, um, a few of the Firebirds also have won individual honors in the past week or so for their excellent efforts on and off the field. Let's start with Zion Simpson-Smith, who was named the Most Valuable Player of the Blue Cross Bowl after rushing for 181 yards and two touchdowns, including a 32-yard run that helped Pearl Cone pull away. Zion has also, also was the captain of the Firebirds, and I appreciate his leadership on the field and in the locker room. Zion, congratulations on being named the MVP. And we want you to just, don't move yet. In just a moment, we're gonna have you hang around and take a picture. Can you give us a wave so everybody can see who you are and celebrate you? Let's give it up. Oh, you're holding the ball? Next is quarterback Keyshawn Tarleton, who won the Mr. Football Award for Class 4A from the Tennessee Titans last week as the best player in the division. Is Keyshawn with us? He's on with, okay, he's, oh, he's in traffic. Maybe he'll make it before we get finished. Okay, so, listen to Keyshawn's stats for the season. 2,294 yards passing, 35 touchdowns, just four interceptions, and of course, one state championship trophy with the Firebird, Firebirds. And Keyshawn faced some tough competition for the Mr. Football Award because his teammate, who I just spoke about, Zion Simpson-Smith, whom we just honored, was a finalist as well. So, congratulations, um, to Keyshawn. Um, congratulations on this great and well-deserved honor. And if he comes in on time, we'd love to get a picture with him as well. Let's give him a round of applause. And finally, one more Pearl Cone senior who excelled on and off the field. Grayson Beach is the 2023 MMPS Hume Award winner. Is Grayson with us? Oh, wow. See, just busy, just busy. Okay, all right. So, he is doing, he's where he's supposed to be right now. The Hume Award goes to the football player who best exemplifies the all-around qualities we want to see in every student athlete. Not just athletic ability, but also academic success, sportsmanship, and character. Grayson showed all of that and more during this championship season. He had to have season-ending surgery for a shoulder injury after just eight games, but he never stopped leading in the locker room and on the sideline. While in the classroom, he has compiled a 3.6 GPA. Grayson, I appreciate you and everything you've done for your team and your school. Congratulations again on winning the Hume Award, and we will get a picture for him to post, um, as soon as possible. But again, congratulations to this entire team on your collective, um, gold ball-winning season and your individual recognition. So, let's give them another round of applause. And Zion, hang on. Oh, yes, our, our coaches and teams will be participating in many more celebrations and award ceremonies. So, we will keep everyone up to speed as those occur, occur. Um, but with that, Chair Rod, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much. Um, it came to my attention that there's a group from a high school here as well. So, if Ms. Tyler, if you'll recognize them while they're here.
Yes, so, um, we've got our group from Sunrise over here. If you guys will stand up and wave. This is our Sunrise Hillsborough group. Um, I was able to come and speak to them. I know that board member Block is also in. I know that Board Member Block is also in contact with them as well, and we are looking forward to your support, and we're excited to work with you on sustainability in Metro. Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thanks for coming, guys. We are always so glad to have so many students to recognize. Tonight was obviously an exceptional amount of students to recognize as they were out the door, but what a wonderful problem to have. So we're really appreciative that y'all came. We're always happy to hear from our students, and it was really great to get to celebrate some really hard work that was done. So that brings us to our next section, which is the Director's Report. So I will be turning it back over to Dr. Battle to go over all of that.
Thank you again, Chair Elrod and Board Members. In just a moment, I'd like to invite up Dr. Lisa Norris to share our presentation, updated presentation on the Metro Schools Reimagine Initiative. I wanted to ground the conversation by looking back to where we started as we get to where we're going. This all's go, this all goes back to about 2019, 2020. I was still interim, and we were talking about our facilities planning, and I realized that we needed to think bigger and bolder than just about zoning and facilities. We needed to ensure everything we do is in the best interest of our students. We worked as a team and with stakeholders to develop some guiding principles, identifying uniform strategies, and help to align our clusters and pathways to meet the needs of students throughout their academic career. One of the biggest initiatives through this has been our fifth-grade reimagined work, which through a lot of hard work, determination, and some investments by our friends at Metro, we're going to be completing in the upcoming school year. This aligns to parent and community desires as well as academic best practices. As we've been thinking through the unique needs of our schools and pathways, it has provided us opportunities to rethink and expand upon models that have shown to work so that we can continue to provide for continuous improvement and making sure every student is known. Again, we're going to give a overview of our Metro Reimagine work. We're going to talk specifically around our fifth-grade transition, which is just one of the uniform strategies a part of Metro Schools Reimagine. So with that, we'll go through our presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions after that. Dr. Norris, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so kindly, Dr. Battle. Good evening, Chair Elrod and Board Members. This evening, I'm providing an overview of the final phase of Reimagine Fifth Grade Transition and other reimagined updates. To ground tonight's overview and update, let's start with the district's four tenants. Each core tenant is represented in Metro Schools Reimagine. We are committed to becoming a responsive support hub for schools and families. Empowered leaders at every level ensure that the district continues to reach its goal. When we identify and eliminate inequities, we are creating the conditions so that all students can achieve, and we ensure that students are achieving by creating and supporting learning experiences that are personalized to each student's needs and aspirations, which directly lead to students-focused outcomes in literacy, numeracy, transitions, and SEO. We align and coordinate supports and resources across the support hub towards supporting students in meeting their individual focused outcomes. Along with Metro Schools Reimagined, the other signature initiatives represent various work streams that are designed to create the optimal conditions for students to reach their focused outcomes. We started Metro Schools Reimagine with a vision to reimagine the ways in which MMPS provides equitable educational opportunities for all students. And we synthesize academic data, we listen to community input and feedback, and we research best practices to help us chart the path forward. This vision requires cohesive academic programming, SEO-integrated learning environments, and aligned district supports. Through Reimagine, then, we focus on each tier and its role in creating pathways to success for all students. In elementary, great attention is given to setting the proper foundations for continuous academic success and SEO development. Middle school experiences, then, center on continued student engagement and academic achievement. High school students can expect that they are well-prepared for post-secondary success because of the academic achievements and SEO development that they receive through their cluster experience. We start with the end in mind by incorporating in the early grades ready graduate experiences that are strengthened through robust transition plans and supports. Reimagine's uniform strategies ensure that there is consistency across the clusters even while each has its unique cluster academic pathway. The district-wide fifth-grade transition supports the pre-K5, 6, 8, 9, 12 school model uniform strategy. And to Dr. Battle's point, it has been the uniform strategy that we've been focusing on, but know that there are many more that are part of this constellation. Additionally, we have expanded Community Achieves, Advocacy, and Peace Centers to complement the fifth-grade transitions. The uniform strategies are another tool that reinforces Reimagine's vision to create equitable educational opportunities. Now, I'm excited to share with you the plans for the final phase of this transition. So I won't read all of these bullets here, but I do want to draw your attention to a couple. Again, we've done this to Dr. Battle's point since 2019, and so we have some history with the fifth-grade transition. And so we're focusing on the clusters that are in the South, certainly, and then know that there has been ongoing collaboration between the Division of Schools and Facilities so that we can prepare for these transitions, and additionally, ongoing supports for, from HR for our teachers as needed, and translated communications from the support hub to all of our families to ensure that they understand the transition and the ways in which we are there to support them. So I'll give you a moment to review the schools that are going through this final phase. You see the elementary schools listed here and the middle schools as well. Note that the transitions in the Magnet schools are also included in the final phase. These transitions presented unique opportunities to determine the most effective and efficient strategies to requir, required, rather, to bring Magnet Middle Schools into alignment with the reimagined pre-K5, 6, 8, 9, 12 school model. So let me take a few moments now to share a bit about the district's advanced planning around the Head MLK pathway. Redesigning this pathway creates opportunities for the Head and MLK school communities to collaborate and dream together about innovative ways to strengthen this pathway. We've intentionally created a long runway, a four-year runway, in fact, to guarantee that we have made all considerations for this decision. We have used the same careful planning strategies for this decision as we have for the entire fifth-grade transition process. Our goal is to create a long, a long enough runway for students, families, and teachers to find success in the redesigned pathway. And again, this redesign aligns with the pre-K5, 6, 8, 9, 12 school model uniform strategy that allows school leaders to focus on tier-specific programming. The Head MLK school communities can come together to strengthen academic experiences that will build the cluster pathway. As you will see in the following slides, the phased-in strategy sustains the current pathways for students already enrolled in each school. Head and MLK will retain their designations as theme and academic magnets, respectively. Additionally, at each school, the number of seats will increase thereby increasing opportunities for students. So for school year 2425, we are identifying that as Phase 1. The fifth-grade transition occurs at this phase, which will include increased seats at all grade levels for Head. MLK remains 712. School year 2526, we've identified as Phase 2. This is when we are beginning in earnest the planning and preparing for the redesigned pathway. Head remains 68, MLK remains 712, and this will be when we begin the rebranding of MLK at Head Magnet Middle. Phase 3 occurs in school year 2627, and you see here that Head remains a 68, and MLK then becomes an 812. And for school year 2728, the final phase, Phase 4, we will see the completion of the grade reconfigurations with MLK at Head Magnet Middle serving grades 6 through 8, and MLK serving grades 9 through 12, with increased seats at every grade level at MLK. Next, we will prioritize the uniform strategies that are featured here on this slide. Strengthening cluster academic pathways and supporting unified cluster leadership structures. Cluster principals have been collaborating to define cluster experiences for elementary, middle, and high school students as outlined by the GPA Experiences Framework. These pathways are an important recruitment tool because we can offer students and families educational experiences that are connected and scaffolded, resulting in students who graduate well-prepared for college and career readiness. The unified cluster structure has resulted in greater collaboration across tiers. In the Whites Creek, Stratford, and Kane Ridge clusters, for example, these principals attend each other's school events, create professional learning opportunities across tiers, and support one another in various ways. Together, these cluster leaders, along with cluster leaders across the district, are building stronger relationships that have a positive impact on academic outcomes in each cluster. So how can the board continue to support? Continue to educate your communities and support the Reimagine Uniform Strategies. Continue to attend and support cluster events. I see many of you all at those cluster events. And then continue to advocate for funding. Certainly, we have seen the value in the expansion of our Advocacy Centers, our Peace Centers, and Community Achieves. We know that that is making a difference for our students, and so continue to advocate in that arena. And so finally, a huge thank you. Thank you for your attention, certainly, during this presentation. More especially, thank you for your support of the fifth-grade transition. We set a goal of transitioning fifth grade back to elementary schools, and with your support, we will accomplish that goal in an accelerated manner. Thank you again. Dr. Battle, I return it to you.
Thank you, Dr. Norris, and I will turn it back over to you, Chair Elrod.
Thank you so much. All right, who has questions? Oh, I'll start with our senior board member.
I just have a comment, and I really, really like the idea of the MLK at Head. I think it's really good. I think it opens up more seats for this academic magnet school that people want to go to so bad. And I also really like having middle schoolers with middle schoolers and high schoolers with high schoolers, and I, I'm a fan. That's all I want to say.
Thanks. Member Tyler?
Yeah, so I have a question. So it says that the Head will remain a theme magnet. Can you, can you refresh my memory? What's the theme for Head Magnet Middle School? I'm sorry.
So Head is currently a thematic school based on theme.
Okay.
And so they will maintain that thematic pathway, and then MLK will maintain their academic magnet designation.
Okay, okay. So MLK is going to maintain academic requirements, but Head will not have the same? I know just some, some questions that I've heard from some teachers have been about if, right now, there are academic requirements for seventh graders coming into MLK at this point, but there wouldn't be for Head at MLK magnet?
Yeah, so the same academic magnet requirements moved to the high school will remain. We will not have those same requirements to get into the thematic school in middle school with MLK at Head. So, so in essence, you still have to meet the academic magnet requirements to attend MLK as a ninth through fourth grader.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And then, will it retain its priority zone around it as well?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct. We will continue to maintain the priority zone, and in some ways, reinstitute that to some degree to make sure that the students in that community can be directly served at Head as well.
And have we ever considered adding a priority zone around Meg's Magnet School?
I will defer to my team. If there has been discussion about that in the past, I'm not aware, I'm not aware of a discussion specific to Meg's, but of course, Meg's is an academic magnet, so they do have academic magnet qualifiers where Head does not. So that is likely the reason. Again, I'm unaware of any consideration in this space, Board Member. Tyler?
Okay. I have some more thoughts, but I know other people have questions, so I may come back.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Member Bugs?
Thank you. Dr. Battle, I'm assuming this has already been communicated to families, and if so, how? And if they have questions, of course, we encourage community to reach out to us.
Yes, we have only done kind of an informational session with staff ahead of the conversation today, because I think it's important for school teams to be aware of the considerations, particularly around the Metro Schools Reimagine work. And we are talking about four years in, in advance. But with this given being the last phase, intentionally, because we knew we had some unique spaces, particularly with Head to MLK, we wanted to be mindful of that, to only to the school staff and giving them a heads up of the four-year phase-in process. We are planning communications this week to parents to make sure that they're aware. But one key area here around communications that's also unique is because this is a four-year phase-in plan, it will not impact any current students in the pathway, particularly at the middle school. And so we were intentional about that, just because families make those decisions so much earlier on. We also wanted to give our staff an opportunity to plan. So while we will be communicating it, it likely will not impact any student currently in the Head to MLK pathway.
Yes. I'm going to start with Member O'Hara Block, and then Member Mays, and then Berthita.
So the, the part of the reasoning behind this, the change at MLK and Head is this, we've, we've gone from, we've gone to schools that are pre-K to 5, 6 to 8, 9 to 12, and so we're aligning to make sure that all of our schools fall into one of those sort of patterns. Can you talk about any of the other considerations and what you anticipate this might do in terms of enrollment both at Head and at MLK? And then I have a couple of questions actually about middle schools generally.
Yes. So first and foremost, this has been a journey for us and our team. And again, my hat goes off to the Reimagine Steering Committee because they identified this a couple of years ago, which is why we chose the phase-in process that we did to give us the longest runway possible to plan appropriately. They, this is a representation of years of study. In this space, I'm looking at Principal Reese, who's been a part of lots of the conversations and walkthroughs and things of that nature for us to make the most advised and informed recommendation here in this space. With regards to capacity at, at both of the schools, we are looking at, and you probably saw on the phase-in timeline, we are looking to increase seats at both the middle school and the high school. So the middle school space increase seats is consistent across all of our middle schools. Where we have transitioned out fifth grade previously, we've given kind of a nod towards increasing capacity at both 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, right? So essentially, schools could be the same size in enrollment that they were when they had fifth grade. And we're doing that in conjunction with their capacity. So because we're also transitioning 7th and 8th grade, kind of phasing that out of the current high school model, that will allow us to increase capacity at 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th. So while you're increasing capacity at the middle school, you have increased capacity at the high school as, as well. And just kind of rough numbers, we're talking about somewhere between 100 and 150 seats, a little less on the middle school, a little more in the high school space because of the actual facility capacity.
So over the last couple of weeks, obviously, we've been talking a little bit about academic magnets, and I'm just, I'm curious actually to hear you talk about academic, core academics and advanced academics in middle schools. So Board Member Tyler asked a question specifically about Head. Just would love to hear you talk a little bit about what we're trying to do at middle schools generally, and then, you know, if there's anything in particular around any of the schools that have qualifications.
Yeah, so if you were looking back at the Uniform Strategies slide, you will see that we're trying to align our, our pathways across the district and, and really thinking about continuity of academic programming. And so when you're thinking about that, I mean, that includes both in a thematic way, but it also includes advanced academics as well, particularly as we're talking, we're working towards increasing our ready graduate rates and those early post-secondary opportunities. So we have a prom opportunity, and this was intentional, to allow for a couple of years for both school communities to have strengthened and more aligned pathways. So we're talking about the theme pathway at Head. So what we've kind of been dreaming around is like in a middle school, kind of what is the dream space around a thematic pathway, going into an academic pathway to MLK? And for MLK, what is kind of your dream in this preparation space for the middle school students learning in a thematic pathway and moving into the academic pathway? So it's going to give us an opportunity to first asset map. We want to definitely not lose anything that's working for our students and our staff and our families. We want to just elevate that in a way that provides even more robust learning opportunities. that provides even more robust learning opportunities for our students. We've talked about both courses. We've talked about sharing spaces. We've talked about lab spaces, exploratory opportunities as we beef this up. But I do think it's critically important to engage the entire learning community to hear more about their desires and their aspirations around how we can make sure that this is the best pathway option available to the families who'll be served.
Yeah, and I know Dr. Reese from her time at Hillsborough and the IB Academy. And obviously, Dr. Mark Shepherd Ray has done a fantastic job at MLK. What about for other? I mean, one of the big things that I've seen in MMPS Reimagine is like the elementary school space, you know, you're getting fifth grade back. Everyone's sort of adjusting to that. There are more teachers, there are more resources. The middle schools have gotten a little smaller. That gives them some opportunity to rethink some things, but it also means that there are some changes. Can you just talk a little bit about?
Yeah, so just globally, the Metro Schools Reimagine work encompasses every MMPS school. So of our elementary schools, all of our middle schools, and our high schools. And so I know we were, I was kind of laser focused on this particular pathway, but what we're seeing through this Reimagine work are more aligned pathways, more advanced academic opportunities, students having more access to early post-secondary opportunities. So in fact, if you are ultimately going to graduate from an IB Academy, you have that IB experience, not only in high school, you have the preparation experience in middle school, you have it in elementary school as well. So you think about all the advanced academics, IB, the early college models, the AP courses. We're backwards mapping that across all of our schools so that not only just in this pathway, but whichever pathway a family selects, they have the options available around the advanced academic courses and other themes that might be a driver for their student's success.
Thanks. I just, I know it has been important as we, as I've had these kinds of conversations with constituents, that people are thinking about, what are the advanced academics available near my house, right? That my kids can go to? And if people, if I have constituents who are, or if anyone does, who are thinking like, yeah, I see some of that happening at my school. I want to see more of it. What's the best pathway for like me to help them?
Can you go back two slides for me? So something that is intentional around our Reimagine work is that we're creating the unified cluster leadership structure that is both internal and external. And so we're asking our cluster teams want to do some initial kind of asset mapping and conversations around where they're going or would like to go, but to also have external leadership and input on what that looks like and also to help us progress monitor and support that work across all of our schools. So that is one opportunity that we are working towards building out across all of our Reimagine pathways. The second thing is reaching directly out to the school. These are conversations that we're having almost daily with our schools. I was just on a call with a cluster of principals. I mean, just the most exciting conversation about where we're going. So they are aware of the conversations. They're aware of their cluster planning and their themes in their clusters. So I would always say, reach out to the school. Take a school tour. Check out their website, where we have a lot of this information posted and engage in those parent engagement opportunities, family meetings. We have our career fairs and explorations at the school level as well. So parents being a part of that school improvement planning process, all of that information is valuable. Feedback as schools develop their pathways. And what we're seeing and hearing is, let's take a middle school, for example, a middle school that's thriving. We're able to create conversation space where the middle school principal is able to say, here's a space that our students are thriving. Like when they get to middle school, we're seeing students really take off and excel in this space. So let's kind of shore up what that looks like at the high school space and then my, excuse me, at the elementary space. And then my high school colleague, we want to make sure that this continues because we've gotten their parent feedback and engagement that they want these experiences available to their students. Just a simple example I can give, we do have spaces where we offer something like African drumming or guitar and, you know, like really meeting the talents of our students. But it's not as helpful if that only happens at elementary school and students don't have that experience in middle school and high school. So we're having those conversations. We've worked closely, for instance, with CMA on our performing arts and closing gaps. It's something we did this past year with regards to performing arts. So if you looked at our pathways right now, if there's kind of an ensemble or dance program at the high school, this year, we now have closed all the gaps where you also see that in middle school and elementary. So that's the work moving forward. Advanced academics, we are definitely having those conversations where you're thinking about the various program models to make sure they exist throughout the entire pathway. And we're having to bring some things in. We're having to take some things out to get a true balance. But of course, all of that is in response to the needs of the school communities being served.
So the stuff on this slide is like, we're in process here, and there will be opportunities for people to weigh in, help make sure that stuff happens at the cluster.
You've probably heard me say this a thousand times. Our motto around continuous improvement is know where you are, but don't stay there. And so there is always an opportunity.
Thank you.
Member Mays?
I really just had a comment. As I have toured schools, I've had a lot of positive feedback from the schools and the Antioch Cluster about the fifth grade transition. So I am thankful to you and your team for the supports that these executive principals and the educators have had, because they've all been very positive. So that's all, I just wanted to make that comment.
Member Nobba McKinney?
Thank you. I think Board Member Block asked quite a few of the questions that I had on my mind. So I'm just going to, oh, is it on? Can you guys? There you go, yes, okay. Do I need to repeat that? Gotcha. Okay, so I just had one just clarifying question related to the pathway for MLK and Head Middle Magnet. So with the way the current structure is set up, current fifth graders will not be in jeopardy of moving over to MLK and being accessible to that seventh grade if they meet the necessary academic criteria, correct?
So, okay. This year, Head is a 5'8" school. Next year, Head will be a 6'8" school, just in alignment with every other middle school in the district. So fifth grade will actually, those are students who are not at Head. They're currently in their elementary school. That's where they will remain after the fifth grade year. They have the option of moving to Head without impacting any student that's currently at Head or MLK.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Member Masters?
Thank you. I know that this is all the culmination of a lot of years of work around the MMPS Reimagine, and that there was always, you know, the intention in this last year of moving all of the fifth grade back to elementary. And I want to say, you know, it is a completely separate issue around this pathway, magnet school pathway proposal that we've all been doing community meetings around. So I just, I kind of want to put that out there on the one hand to say that this work is separate from that. However, this is the question that has come up a lot in the community meetings. What about MLK? It has seventh and eighth. So this is, I think, very helpful for us to understand, you know, where the administration has landed with all of the reimagined work around what to do with that, with MLK being sort of an outlier in that way. I think, at least in the community meeting that I held and the conversations I've been having, I think there's a lot of desire among families to have a more standardized K through eight experience with the idea that then you can sort of, you know, branch out in high school at that point. You know, maybe it's NSA, maybe it's one of the Academic Magnet High Schools. But I did just want to, I think the board is like very, very, very familiar at this point with sort of all of the considerations around the conversation we had about academic magnet pathways and all of the community conversations we're having about that. But just want to make it really clear, this is separate from that. This is a separate endeavor. Although, you know, the two conversations certainly dovetail. Yeah, dovetails the word. Okay, thank you.
Member Tyler?
Yeah, so just some practical thoughts about it. Will the MLK, current MLK middle school teachers have priority to transfer to Head? And if, how will that work if Head is going to increase capacity before MLK loses their middle school? How are we making sure we're taking care of those teachers?
Absolutely. So the first thing is, we've kind of pulled some data. We're talking about seven to eight teachers currently at MLK. We've worked with the principal on several pathways. So they will absolutely take priority. We're going to make sure that our staff has what they need. It could be various pathways. It could be remaining at MLK, because a lot of our, many, there are several of our seventh and eighth grade teachers who are certified seven, twelve, so that is an option as well with MLK increasing capacity. So very well, they could be absorbed in the increase at MLK. They will also take priority in Head placements as well, or the new MLK Middle, as well as be supported in anywhere they would love to land in Metro National Public Schools. That is something we communicated to them today. Listen, I'll say this, and I want to just say this loudly. While we're getting ourselves in a consistent and coherent configuration, we're going to make sure that we are thoughtful about the impact, right? Because no change is easy. When we first started talking about fifth grade, we wanted it, but it was too hard. We had teachers who had to shift, administrators who had to shift, so on and so forth. And so there's always kind of that initial, like, this is happening, but we are about four years in at this point. But we're going to take care of our people. And I think by the successes that we've seen across the city and having so many of our schools already transition in this space is just a testament to how serious we are about taking care of our folks. We've shared with them that if they have individual, because everybody's situation is unique or different, we will have individual conversations if we need to. We will have ongoing opportunities for engagement, particularly around academic programming. I always love the opportunity where you can kind of rethink and be fresh around what you're doing and providing in your schools. So we will have ongoing engagement with regards to that, both parents and staff. Maybe there's something that hasn't existed that we would like to exist there. It gives us an opportunity to plan in advance and not be doing that reactively. So we'll continue that over the next few years so that once we get to school year 27, 28, right? Four years out. We will be more than prepared for this transition and that our people, our leaders are taken care of. So absolutely is probably all I needed to say. So forgive me for saying more.
No, no, that's good, that's helpful. And then I guess if you could just kind of expand a little bit on was sixth grade considered to be added to MLK? And why did you decide to instead remove the middle school? Could you explain a little?
Yeah, so thank you for the question. So our team has been studying this for some time. It's not many things I bring that we haven't gotten our ducks in a row around. And so there's lots of considerations there. First and foremost, our configuration in this space with regards to fifth grade transition has been the pre-K five space. And particularly, when you're thinking about the middle school space, primarily, we're in the six through eight and nine, 12. So getting in line with the configuration, particularly around the academic pathway conversations. There's other considerations around capacity in schools as well. There's also curricular considerations. We've already seen that. Hopefully, after this transition, we'll solve for that in the fifth grade. And so we're just trying to be very mindful around leveraging the limited resources we have, while maximizing the capacity we have at our schools and educating our students well. So that too, we've looked at that as well. But again, this one gets us more in alignment to where our district configurations are, how we support, how our curricular alignment works. And it makes sense for parents as they're making these choices as they're moving forward throughout our system.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question would be, how are you, how are you going to be asking for parental feedback? I know that you've been talking to the teachers, and I know that you've been talking to the administrative. Are we going to be soliciting parental feedback?
We absolutely are. So the thing I want to again highlight here is the current students in the pathways are not going to be the ones primarily impacted by this configuration change. And so we're trying to gather our information so we know where students are coming from, how to fully engage a community that comes from multiple areas across the city. In the meantime, we will engage with the families and the students that are there. We have, I know that there will be a meeting at MLK next week, I believe it is, which is a different conversation. So we're just trying to be timely and thoughtful about that level of engagement. But our team will continue to do that again. It will be over the next three to four years where we have engagement opportunities.
Okay, great. And then I know I said that was my last one, but just, so you said that this would open up about 150 seats, is that correct?
Up to. It could be fewer than that, because you've got to think about, so there's a phase in and out scenario. So you've got to look at how many current seats are at each grade level in order to, and it takes about four years to then get to your capacity. So it could be anywhere, at Head, it could be anywhere from 50 to 100, based upon how many students are already enrolled in specific grade levels, and then MLK on the higher side.
Okay. And then I know that this is a separate conversation from our academic pathways, but knowing the people, I think when we had looked at who is, how many students are on the waiting list for Academic Magnet High Schools, it was roughly like 190 or something around there. So I see this as a way to kind of open up those extra seats.
Absolutely.
Is that, I mean, I assume that was part of the thinking?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Nobba McKinney?
Thank you. All right. My question is about, we are quite excited in the southeast area to have fifth grade being returned back to our elementary schools. So there's been lots of questions. Everybody knows that it's coming. They're very excited about that. But there's some operational questions about like, how many, you know, how many portables is this going to, school going to get, or this kind of thing? When is that information going to be conveyed? I'm assuming with principals to get to parents as they are inquiring about that?
Two different responses here. If it's specifics of portables, we did that this past summer. So we've already worked with school teams on if there were portable needs. So that's already cared for. Preparations are already in place, particularly for this last phase for next school year. Thank you to my team for working so far in advance. The second part of that conversation with regards to any other kind of operational things from the school end, we've already convened all of our school principals who will, this is part of like our playbook here, because we've done this a few times. We've already engaged with those principals to give them all the most frequent FAQs, questions that they probably are having circled about in their minds. So they have that. We've also built out a webpage on our website where families can go, staff can go, principals can go, that answer every question we've ever received about fifth grade, the fifth grade transition. So we're doing it through meetings, but we're also making it visible through our website. If there's just like this one-off question that like I didn't get to ask in a meeting, it's probably on the FAQ on the web.
Okay. Oh, I just have a comment. Dr. Nobba McKinney?
So I just wanted to take a moment and thank Dr. Battle and the Reimagine Leadership Team for your intentional and thoughtful work in doing this. I know that it is a lot of work and a lot of pieces that you're having to put together. So I just really appreciate what on our end seems somewhat seamless. And probably on your end, you've got a lot of roadblocks. But I just, I just really appreciate the process by which you have gone through over the last couple of years to move fifth grade back to elementary and continue this process into its next year. And so as we continue to do the Reimagine work and do that, I just really appreciate the teams that are working to do this work as well as the feedback, really looking, listening to the feedback that you're receiving about this and how you're incorporating that into the decision-making processes as you continue. So thank you, thank you so much. And I'll stop it at there.
Member O'Hara Block?
Sorry, I know I've already asked a ton of questions. This is actually going to be sort of a statement for confirmation. So as I've been sitting here thinking about this, what I feel like is going on in my head about it is that MMPS Reimagine work to date has heavily focused on K through five and making that, I'm probably going to say something, you're going to be like, uh, yeah. But has heavily focused on K through five.
uh, yeah, but has heavily focused on K through five and making that transition. And in the next step, so in this final phase and in the next steps, we're going to be focused on the cluster thing. This is what you said, right? So we're now going to be focused on middle schools and high schools and then strengthening all the way through. I mean, I know I'm just repeating what you said, but like, I think it just, it's clarifying for me, and when I talk to folks about it, to say, we've been focused on K five, we're now going to be really focused on middle schools and high schools and pathways from beginning to end.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you. I appreciate you checking for knowledge and doing a little knowledge check-in. Check for understanding, thank you. A little knowledge check-in. All right, any other question? All right, thank you so much for the update and answering our many questions. All right, that gets us to our public participation. So we will now hear from MMPS stakeholders. The list is coming up, thank you so much. They signed up to speak in front of the board during tonight's public participation. So we have our list of participants here. I ask that everybody kind of looks at that list so they know in what order they're going to go up. Everybody has to give us their name. You, we would like it if you would tell us what district you live in then, but you do not need to tell us your address. And then at the end of three minutes, you will hear this little ding, beautiful, to help you keep track of your three minutes. You can see that there is a timer to your right. At the end of your three minutes, your time will be up and the next person will come up. So let's start first. All three have signed up to speak about the contract that's on, in front of us in consent on Go School Box. So let's start with the first person, Monae Russell.
Hello, can y'all hear me? My name is Monae Russell, and I am from District One. My name is Monae. I have twin girls. I am here referencing the Go School Box contract on tonight's agenda. One of my daughters struggled with reading, and I see my long life struggle within her because I struggle with reading as well, and I don't want that for her. So when I saw this expensive contract on the agenda that I, that it was even, that it wasn't even discussed, I can't help but to wonder what is really going on? Why is it not being discussed? As I understand, this contract would help manage tutoring and, I'm sorry, and experience, experiences for tutors, teachers, and administrators. I hope this, I hope that, I hope is that you are asked the hard questions and you are, have, have high expectations for this contract. It may be just a contract to you, but for parents that has kids with struggling with reading, it's life or death. Will School Box ensure that we have high-quality dosaged tutoring? Will we parents get a report on whether tutoring is helping or hurting our children? Will you get your money's worth? Will you get your money's worth? Will the students like my daughter receive what she needs to be successful in reading and math?
Thank you. Our next person is Darrell Grady. Darrell? Thanks.
How y'all doing today? My name is Darrell Grady, and I have six children in metro schools, and I'm a former metro school attendee myself. So I'm here to talk about the Go School Box because my child was at risk of being retained in the second grade because the third grade retention law, and I didn't trust the system. So I pulled my child out of school as a product of the school system, who also got caught in the criminal justice system. I have no faith in the belief in how the system operate. So I want to know if this contract would include letting parents know when their child needs urgent help and provide a plan to lift their achievements before it's too late. For example, would parents of second graders get a customized learning plan to ensure children read at or above grade level before the end of the school year? Caught up in this contract is the future of our children who might need extra help. We want to make sure that they are not being rubber-stamp contracts. Our children's lives depend on these decisions. Thank y'all.
Thank you. And last, we have Sonya Thomas.
Hello, long time no see. Good to see you guys. My name is Sonya Thomas. I am the executive director for Nashville Propel. I'm here tonight to support the parents that you just saw behind me that came and who are petitioning for accountability and high expectations. I also represent parents, grandparents, and as you can see, some great-grandparents from our most struggling communities with children's own to Nashville's lowest performing schools. The $1.3 million Go School Box contract on this consent agenda is something that is important and means something different to us than it may mean to you. That it's on the consent agenda tells us that you might, or you might not even know what's really going on. So look, I can't tell you how many parents and how many stories we've heard about how disorganized and ineffective tutoring is in our schools. So we just want to be sure with this particular contract that we are not getting more of the same. What is the same? I'm glad you guys asked. More defense of the status quo, increasing gaps amongst races in between the haves and have-nots, and turning a blind eye to real accountability. What do I mean by this? Exhibit A, this $1.3 million contract on the consent agenda. Exhibit B, Dr. Battle's status quote-unquote "successful evaluation" because 28.5% of students met or exceeded expectations. You celebrated a two-point increase. That grieves me. There's, there's another way to look at this. You celebrated 71.5% of students below expectations. Some of those students' parents are here with me tonight. This is about real accountability. And before I leave, let me take a moment to recognize families who have lost everything this week. Some of those parents are Nashville Propel families and are trying to rebuild their lives after a natural disaster. Then they have to come back and fight for their children's lives due to man-made disasters. This is one of hundreds of contracts that will fly through your fingers without public scrutiny or accountability. This is one of hundreds of contracts that will, that you will approve tonight and never look back on. Our children, our educators, and our tax dollars deserve better.
Okay, thank you. All right, that gets us to our governance issues, which is our consent agenda. We have adopted the agenda as listed. If there are no objections, these items will be adopted. Do we have any objections? Okay, seeing no objections, these items are adopted by unanimous consent. All right. That brings us to board reports. For board reports, we have an upcoming board retreat that will be January 29th. Am I correct? Okay, thank you. I know I got changed dates. So January 29th, we're having a board retreat that has been sent to your outlet calendars. I ask that you are able to attend if possible. There's going to be a lot of information covered there from several committees and of course our budget. So there's going to be a lot of that information. Beyond that, we're going to get straight to announcements. So I will start with, I'm going to actually start with our student board members tonight, and then we'll do our districts. So junior board member, if you'll start with, start us off.
Good afternoon, everyone. I just wanted to re-congratulate the James Lawson freshman football team. Now, I'm not, I'm not super into sports, but even I know what like, what kind of achievement that is. So I'm proud of us. And I also wanted to say, because it is getting colder, if you do need a coat, the James Lawson community room is open, so you can get a coat that was donated because it is getting colder. And you know, want to keep yourself safe and happy holidays, and I hope everyone has a good New Year too.
Senior board member?
Good afternoon, everyone. I want to first give a shout out to John Overton's boys bowling team are the TWSAA Division One District Bowling Champions. And we always talk about football and basketball, so I thought that was cool. I want to give out a shout out to you guys' bowling team. And then also, me and Christine had a really fun time last Thursday with Leadership Nashville and their education day, where we were able to moderate a panel and talk to some other students in MMPS and a charter student as well. So that was a really fun experience. And then if you guys will please excuse me, I am about to head over to Green Hill High School and cheer, so I'm going to head out early now. But I hope everyone has a great break and happy holidays.
Good job. District One?
I'm going to be right behind Elena because White's Creek plays human fog tonight in basketball over at White's Creek, so I have some double vested interests. I'm just going to sit in the middle and be really, really quiet. But I do want to, Elena mentioned Leadership Nashville. Principal Gleason was on a panel at Leadership Nashville last Thursday, and she did an amazing job. That panel was around for her great literacy and the efforts and initiatives that are, have been developed within MMPS. And as we all know, and as Dr. Battle has quoted and been quoted tonight, that the work to move the needle for our students is ongoing and consistent. And so just to understand that the resources that we pull in to partner with us are resources that we have worked with that understand the goals, that the things that we're trying to accomplish, and we still got extreme transparency in the data and the achievement scores and the work that is still left to be done within MMPS. So again, I just want to give a huge shout out to Principal Gleason, who stood flat-footed and very confident in sharing the work that's happening in MMPS. And we were also very clear and transparent about the challenges that are not always district-made in our efforts to do what's best for our students and families. So thank, I was an honor to be on that panel with her. Again, very well-versed in, in the efforts and initiatives within the district. So I do know that we've gotten some feedback from several of the participants I have that have come directly to me and through the participant from HCA that was present, and the message was very, very clear about not only what we're trying to do, what we have accomplished, and the challenges, and where those challenges are coming from that we're dealing with here in MMPS. So thank you for that.
District Three?
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to just express that a lot, a lot of families are still struggling after the storms over this past weekend. A lot of the, the homes and areas in District Three were affected. I spent a lot of time over the weekend sort of assessing the damage, checking in with folks, trying to respond to inquiries via phone and text and social media and, and email. I also wanted to be sure to state that MMPS was out all day on Sunday checking schools to make sure that they were going to be ready for students to go to school on Monday. NES was working all, all that day to get the power back on at all of those schools. And while I can absolutely understand the desire to say, let's just not, let's just not have school, let's just give us a moment to reboot. The reality in MMPS is that a day without school is a day where some basic needs aren't met for many students. And so, you know, the overarching idea there was let's, let's get schools open. Let's get students who may not have power at home into a warm school, and we can start assessing what we can do for these families. And so all that to say as well, that we do offer access to some resources at NashvilleResponse.com. If you're a family who has been affected, you can ask for support. You can also offer to volunteer and help through that NashvilleResponse.com. You can also reach out directly to your school to find out what resources there are. And please, if your child is missing, is going to have absences as a result of this storm, communicate that to the school. Those will be excused absences. But there is just a high desire always in MMPS to make sure that our schools are open and that children have schools to go to. So I just want to express appreciation. Dr. Battle was out driving around Madison on Sunday, and I was on the phone with her telling her what I was seeing as well. So there, there was a joint concerted effort around assessing what the situation was going to be for families on Monday. And please, you know, continue to reach out, reach out to me directly via email at my board email address, and I can try to help connect folks with resources as needed as well. And I hope everybody's doing better.
District Four?
As a follow-up to Ms. Masters, I do want to take a moment to acknowledge the, the lives that were lost during the tornadoes. We actually had a father of an MMPS family who lost his life trying to save his child and his mother. So continued prayers, and, and just want to call the names of the families here in Davidson County. Joseph Dalton was 37 years old. Floridema Gabrielle Perez was 31 years old. And then we had a two-year-old, Anthony Omar Mendez was two years old. So just uplifting them in our Davidson County community, as well as the lives that were lost in Clarksville as well, and just the devastation that families are feeling right now. We are here to support in any way that we can, and our thoughts and prayers are for you and the community. I do reiterate, Ms. Masters, and please go to Nashville Respond if you are looking to volunteer, if you're looking to support families in any way, or you're looking to make donations. The other thing I would like to, so just keeping the families in your prayers at this time. Next, I would like to follow up on Dr. Gentry. In the Leadership Nashville, we had two parent, MMPS parents who also spoke on a panel about third grade retention in metro Nashville public schools. So I want to publicly thank Ashley Gish and Norman Merrifield for sitting on a panel as well and talking with leaders across our community about the good and the, and the areas that we need to continue to work on in metro Nashville public schools. So I really want to thank them and the work that they did as well for representing our district. And then lastly, I will be hosting a community meeting next Monday. What is that date? I don't know that date. The 18th. So I will be hosting a meeting Monday, the 18th, from 6:00 to 7:30. I saw a face. Community meeting in the Donaldson Hermitage and Old Hickory community. That will, that, that actually, that meeting will be remote, so it will be via Zoom. So we will be putting out the information so that you can have it to make it more accessible for families to have access to join in on that meeting. So stay tuned, please look at all social media channels, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter for the link to be able to join that meeting. Thank you all, and we don't have another meeting coming up. So wishing everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year as we go into the new season. Thank you.
District Five?
Thank you, Chair Elrod. First, the Parks Board, even though it's January 2nd, that's the first Tuesday of the New Year, will be meeting at 12 noon. So if you are interested in what's happening with the Parks Board, they are still discussing the, excuse me, provisions for students to take off courses free of charge. Then Dr. Gentry and I are hosting a joint North Nashville Town Hall meeting connected to the Magnet School Conversation where board member, members, board member Masters has agreed to come and answer questions. has agreed to come and answer questions about the proposed policy. So please join us at MLK Monday, Janu-, uh, Monday, December 18th from 5 to 7. Um, Jones, Jones today Elementary School will, um, perform their This Is Us concert at 5 o'clock this Thursday. That's December 14th at, uh, again, at 5 o'clock at Jones. They've been working with the Nashville Children's Theater. They've been working with some local artists in the Nash, the North Nashville Buchanan Collaborative, the Arts Collaborative, um, and a few other artist groups that have supported them. So I look forward to, to seeing these babies perform, and of course, my favorite little kindergarten student. Lastly, um, the conversation around tutoring, I wanted to send a, a real shout out to the Lee Chapel AME Church family. Uh, they've been partnering with Fisk University to offer free tutoring, yes, Fiskite, to offer absolutely free tutoring after school for students in North Nashville. They actually provide transportation for at least two schools. So please feel free to join them on, what is it? Tuesdays and Thursdays. Um, they had, they rounded out their end of the year or end of semester tutoring today, but will restart, I believe, January 10th. I'll send, I'll make sure that information is shared. Thank you.
District Six?
Sure. Um, thank you. Um, so just a a few, um, announcements. First and foremost, I want to say congratulations to our, um, Antioch High School students who are currently enrolled in the Intro to Computer Science course. This is a course that is, uh, dual enrollment offered with, uh, Stanford University. There was an article that was, uh, shared in the Tennessean, I believe it was today, that talked a little bit about that course. And, uh, that was, um, that actually happened a couple of weeks ago. We had a visit from the Provost from Stanford, Ms. Priscilla Fiden, who is the Associate Vice Provost for Digital Education, was here and got to tour the school and talk to the students about that program, and she was thoroughly impressed. So congratulations to the Antioch High School students there. Um, also wanted to, uh, say thank you to the Links Chapter that provided an opportunity for some of our young ladies to participate in the Girls Powered by STEM that was held at Fisk University on December 9th. Southeast Nashville had the largest delegation of, uh, young ladies that joined that event. So I was pretty excited to hear that. Um, couple of other things, and I won't be long, I promise. Uh, Kane Ridge had their winter concert recently, uh, last week. They had, um, their beginning band, their percussion band, their marching band, and, um, there were four different, uh, four different performances, and they did a phenomenal job. And I believe they have one that's going on tonight that started at 6:00. So if anybody can get out there, it's, uh, free and open to the public, so you can go and enjoy some really great music tonight. I believe it's the choral, um, group that is, uh, singing tonight. And, uh, really big shout out to, and I haven't seen this yet, I recorded it, so hopefully I'll get to see it. Kane Ridge Elementary School was on, featured on CBS, on the CBS Evening News highlighting the Accelerated Scholars Program this evening at 5:30. So I was here, so I didn't get to see it, but I did record it, uh, so I'm hoping to get to see that. So anybody who had an opportunity to see that, I hope you really enjoyed it. I'm so proud of these schools for doing all the good things. And, um, just as a reminder, we are quickly approaching MLK Day. So it is my duty to share that MLK Day events in Nashville will start on January 11th and run through Ja- January 15th. And I'm also excited to say that our lovely young people in the audience right now from Sunrise Hillsborough will also be, uh, part of that, uh, youth symposium. They will host a workshop on, uh, at the youth symposium that will be held on January 13th at MLK Magnet School. So I encourage everyone who is interested to come out. Um, very excited about these young people who are gonna be, um, taking part in this event. And, uh, because I love to see Frida's reaction. As a reminder, our keynote speaker this year will be Nikki Giovanni of Fiskite, and I encourage everyone to come out to that event. It will be held on Monday, January 15th on the campus of Tennessee State University at the Gentry Center. The program will start at 9:00, convocation program will start at 10:00 a.m. Uh, if you are interested, you can still participate in the annual March 2 Gentry that will take place at Jefferson Street Missionary Baptist Church, starting at 9:00 a.m. on Monday, the 15th. And we would, uh, love to have everybody who is interested come out to that event. Um, and finally, one last thing that I wanted to share, oh, as a, so, um, thank you, and I wish everyone a, a very happy holiday season. Please be safe, take care of yourselves, and we will see you in January. Thank you.
District Seven?
Um, I want to give a shout out to our student board members who did an awesome job of moderating Leadership Nashville panels. Uh, watch out Kristen Rucker, because we found the moderators, uh, depressed, um, after she retires. But to see our students, and more importantly, see our student, student board members moderate a whole hour, uh, twice, not once, but twice, um, the impression you made with the leaders of Nashville, they Nashville, they were, um, uh, I won't say flabbergasted, but that's not the right word, but they, they were very impressed, and they bragged about how well the job you did. And I just bragged on you, too, because you're my people. And so I just wanted to let know that this, the leadership, senior leadership bloom over the years is exciting, and you did a really great job. So I'm very proud of you. Thank you. Happy New Year.
District Eight?
Um, just a reminder from Dr. DeBauyn McKinney that we have our evaluations due for Dr. Battle, um, first quarter of the year. So everyone, please get those in. Um, and then, uh, also, um, I just wanted to take an opportunity to as well, um, send condolences to, uh, the families of, of those who died in the, uh, tornado this weekend. Also, I know folks are still struggling to get back on their feet, thanks to, um, Board Member Masters and Dr. Battle and their team for getting out there and, um, and helping all, all of us. I know we all had questions and concerns over the weekend as well. And so, um, it was good to have sort of instant communication, um, about what was happening. Um, and just appreciate all of that and, um, wishing everyone in the Goodlitzville, Hermited, or sorry, Hendersonville, Madison communities the best as they, uh, work toward recovery.
District Nine?
Yes, so I'm, I've got a lot of Lawson High School heavy announcements today. Um, first, we Lawson hosted the Leadership Nashville last Thursday, um, for their school, for a school visit and a discussion on education, and it included a visit from the newest Commissioner of Education for the state, Lizette Reynolds. Um, this Thursday, James Lawson will be having their winter concert for band, orchestra, chorus, and jazz band. It will be at 6 o'clock at the school, and they'll be performing in the Lawson Performing Arts Center. Um, hm? The LPAC. I like it. I like the way you guys have named everything, Thunderdome and the like. Yeah, it's awesome. Um, Lawson's theater production of the SpongeBob Musical has been selected as the main stage musical at the Tennessee Education Theater Association's Annual Thespian Conference in 2024. Every year, there are only two schools selected for this honor, only one musical and one non-musical, and Lawson was selected as the SpongeBob Musical, and they will be performing. Um, their students are currently raising funds to cover travel expenses and other fees. You can find a link for that on all my social media places. And finally, um, WeGo is, uh, soliciting comments about their spring route system, and as of August, they've been running what has, um, been called a pilot for the new route, as Route 70 is the number, um, to Lawson High School, so that our students and our parents are able to get back and forth from the school Monday through Friday, 6 to 6. Um, I think personally it is necessary for the school to be able to reach the community and be part of it. It allows our students to be able to participate in after-school sports. It allows our, um, and theater and anything that happens after school. It allows our parents to be able to come back and forth. It is extremely important for the school as a community. And so I suggest that, um, everybody who agrees would send a comment into WeGo saying that you would like for them to continue this route. It's Route 70. And you would send your comments to WeGoTransit@Nashville.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. From the board chair perspective, I need to make a correction that the retreat is on January 26th. The original date was the 29th, so I apologize for, uh, misstating that before. So it is the 26th, uh, just, just so we're clear. No, it's fine. It's fine. Uh, and again, that is through your, um, we've sent that all to your Outlook calendars. For District Two, we have a number of events coming up. There's been some great performances of Elf at Oliver. There's been, um, many other performances. There's been drives and all kinds of stuff. Um, and those can all be found on my Facebook page. I'm not going to list them all off. But I do need to, uh, make sure that I should give a shout out to, there's gonna be an Overton Cluster Family and Staff Night this Friday at Overton High School. This has been something that I've been eager for us to do, to kind of build that Overton cluster enthusiasm, um, for being Bobcats. And so I appreciate Dr. Gardner and the staff at Overton taking that on. It's gonna be, again, this Friday. Activities are 5:00 to 7:30 in the small gym. And then you also get, if you are a parent or student of a cluster school, you can also go to the basketball games. They start at 6 o'clock. There's the girls' basketball game and the boys' basketball game. I should just say, to be very clear, we have family coming into town that Friday morning, and so I'm trying to pull away to go to that, that evening. Um, but I'm really excited that it's gonna continue without me, and I appreciate all the organization that that took from not just Overton, but the cluster schools as well, and how that support got together. So thank you so much to those staff members. Be there no further business. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.